So good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 12, 2026, meeting of the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners. Before we begin, I'd like to make a note that the Board of Commissioners met in executive session prior to this meeting to discuss legal-related matters. We'll now begin the meeting with a roll call. I'll ask our Assistant Township Manager, Amy Cuthbertson, to now please take the role.
Commissioner Gondak?
Present.
Commissioner Forstiegrub?
Here.
Commissioner Cavender?
Here.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Commissioner Quinn?
Here.
Commissioner Hart?
Present.
Commissioner McCollum?
Here.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Here.
And Commissioner Trombetta?
Here. Thank you. I'll now ask everyone to rise, and we will have our Pledge of Allegiance led by our Chief of Police, John Viola. Chief.
(Inaudible) to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
I don't want to set up a fucking BlackBerry.
So we'll now begin with presentation, and I will actually move up to the podium. I'll ask Commissioner Quinn to join me, and I'll ask Deputy Chief Hagan to join me as So we're reading a proclamation this evening recognizing Deputy Chief Hagan for his many years of service. Whereas Deputy Chief Joseph Hagan dedicated more than 32 years of honorable service to the Haverford Township Police Department, committing his career to the safety, security, and well-being of the community. And whereas during his distinguished career, Deputy Chief Hagan advanced through the ranks with professionalism and leadership, being appointed Sergeant on July 23, 2005, Lieutenant on April 12, 2011, and Deputy Chief on January 12, 2016. And whereas Deputy Chief Hagan earned two commendations of merit for exceptional police work, including his calm and restrained actions during an armed confrontation on April 24, 1995, and his role in the apprehension of a violent suspect following a stabbing at the Jack M. Barak Hebrew Academy on April 27, 2015. And whereas he was awarded a commendation for heroism for his life-saving actions on October 11, 1998, when without regard for personal safety, he assisted in rescuing two residents trapped in a smoke-filled house fire on Remington Road. And whereas Deputy Chief Hagan played a critical role in numerous major law enforcement operations, including the 48-hour standoff at the John E. DePond Estate in 1996. And whereas throughout his career, Deputy Chief Hagan helped modernize the department by overseeing key initiatives, including updates to training programs, the implementation of the Body-Worn Camera Program, acquisition of the Bearcat Armored Rescue Vehicle, departmental accreditation and re-accreditation, and leadership during the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas as a Delaware County MIRT, MIRT Commander, Deputy Chief Hagan provided regional leadership during major mutual aid operations, including the Papal Visit, Democratic National Convention, U.S. Open Championship, and Philadelphia Eagles Super Bowl parades. Go Birds! And whereas Deputy Chief Hagan served as a mentor and leader to generations of officers, exemplifying integrity, professionalism, and dedication to public service. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners, on behalf of Haverford Township and its residents, hereby expresses its deepest gratitude and appreciation to Deputy Chief Joseph Hagan for his exemplary service, leadership, and lasting contributions to the Haverford Township Police Department and the community it serves. And be it further proclaimed that the Board congratulates Deputy Chief Joseph Hagan upon his retirement and wishes him continued health, happiness, and fulfillment for years to come. I now invite our Chief of Police to offer his remarks, and our new Deputy Chief, TJ Law.
Here, Joe. I'll give this to you first, so. So, let's pick one. On behalf of all the Haverford Township members of the Police Department, Joe, we wish you well. Accept this as a memory of working here and being one of the best Deputy Chiefs one could ever have. Sorry, TJ. Your friendship, your support, and always being on top of things, it means more to me than anything else in the world. And I will miss you, but enjoy your retirement and job at ICE Hardware.
All right, keep standing, because we're now inviting Peggy Murrit and John Orns to come up and offer a few remarks.
Peggy and I represent Haverford Alliance for Drug Awareness. We're a very small organization here in Haverton, so our plaque's the smallest one that you'll see. But I'd like to read it to you. Certificate of Appreciation, Haverford Alliance for Drug Awareness hereby presents this certificate of appreciation to Joseph Hagan, Deputy Chief, Haverford Township Police Department. Thank you for your dedicated service, professional leadership, and commitment to drug awareness and prevention, helping protect youths, families, and the safety of our communities. Signed by Peggy and myself.
Thank you.
And we have something else for you. I hope it doesn't lose some of its luster.
We knew Joe was going down to the outer banks, so there's one for you, too. We just wanted to thank Joe. From day one, from day one, Joe helped us. From the very first vigil, he organized traffic control for us. He got us a permit, no problem. Anytime I would ever call Joe, and this was before we had a health department, we had no idea how many overdose deaths there were, and we needed this information. Joe would stop what he was doing, and he would calculate the numbers. He would work with Jim McCanns, and he would get back to us like within three hours. He's amazing. And lastly, he always gave us a good table at national night out. He carried it, but he knew the information we were getting out was important. So thank you, Joe. We're going to miss you so much.
Thank you.
You're done. No. Please be seated, but I am actually going to open the floor now to my colleagues on this board if they'd like to offer any remarks for Deputy Chief Hagan.
Well, Joe, I've served as the Chair of the Police for the past five years now, I think, and it's been great to work with you over the years. Each and every time I'd send you a text or call, you, you, or you would always get back. It was great, great to work with you for all these years, and enjoy your time now.
Further comments?
I would just briefly join. I know you want to get out of here. Briefly join and just simply say congratulations. Since I've been on the board, you've always been immensely helpful to me in my role as a Commissioner. You've always conducted yourself with the utmost professionalism, and I have nothing but well wishes for you and your future endeavors. Enjoy your retirement.
Madam President, nobody can get out just quite yet. My relationship with Joe goes back to being St. Dennis dads together. So while everything, Madam President, that you had in the proclamation heralds the extraordinary police officer and public servant that Joe is, I just want to talk about what a terrific friend he was, what a bonus he was to our township and to our PD. I have had, in the past, fairly animated constituent meetings that Joe has always eagerly been part of and been an extraordinary representative of the Police Department when people had questions. And while I have so many memories, I would have to say my favorite one of all was our second meeting for the U.S. Open in 2013 at Cheston Wald. So on behalf of everybody in the sixth ward, and for everybody prior to my colleagues who served on this board, served with you as a member of our force and as the Deputy Chief, I just want to say that I am better for knowing you, and I appreciate very much your service.
I always thought that these meetings were your favorite part of the job, so we could stick around the whole time. I just want to echo what everybody said. Really appreciate everything that you did for this township. I always admired Deputy Chief Hagan. He was truly one of the good guys, and he was, he had a vision of the job that he was doing, and it was of a police officer who was trying to help the people that he served. And he had a view of the world where there was right and there was wrong, and he was on the side to help make things a little bit more right for the people of this township. And I think that's, you know, that's the highest compliment that I can offer you. And on a personal level, you know, when I started on this board, I was a little bit younger and a little bit overmatched by some of the people that were on in terms of what was happening, and not everybody was so open to fill me in on exactly what was happening. And Joe was one of the kindest, gentlest souls that I had the pleasure of dealing with, and I always appreciate that. So thank you.
Any further comments?
And I'll just, too, express my gratitude. I greatly enjoyed working with you. You really are an exemplary leader, great friend, great person to know. In terms of what you brought to the Police Department, I always thought you brought a real human approach to it, where you really thought about, you know, what the person was experiencing, and was very compassionate and empathetic. And again, it was a great privilege to have worked with you, so thank you. Any further comments?
Then we'll offer a three-minute recess to allow him to leave if he'd like. I mean, I know he wants to stay for public comment, but thank you. Okay, thank you so much for your patience. We'll now resume our Board of Commissioners meeting, and we'll do so by moving forward with Agenda Item Number Three. This is the Citizens Forum. The Citizens Forum is the portion of the meeting during which members of our public can come and speak on agenda items. If you have a matter which you want to discuss that's not related to agenda, please reserve that for the second Citizens Forum later in the meeting. Each speaker will be given approximately three minutes to offer their remarks, and I ask that you please, when you come to the podium, state your name, state your general address or vicinity from which you live, and then offer your remarks. Just so you know, this will not be a back-and-forth session, so if you have questions, raise them during your comments, but otherwise, the Commissioners will have the opportunity to respond after all citizens are heard. We'll begin with our registered speakers, and so with that, Marie Okio-Grosso. I invite you to come to the podium and offer your remarks.
Good evening. My name is Marie Okio-Grosso. I'm in Ward Four, and I am here tonight speaking on behalf of the Haverford Human Relations Commission and as a township resident. The HRC is strongly in support of the resolution prohibiting the Haverford Police Department from entering into 287G agreements. We believe that this action is an important step towards strengthening community belonging and a clear expression of the values already embedded in the Haverford Human Relations Ordinance and the everyday values of our community. The purpose of the HRC, as outlined in our ordinance, is to promote equity, dignity, and freedom from discrimination for all who live, work, and learn in Haverford Township. Central to that mission is the understanding that community safety depends on trust. When residents fear the local government or local law enforcement may become entangled in federal immigration enforcement, that ultimately erodes that trust, particularly for our immigrant families and our communities of color. A 287G agreement blurs the lines between local policing and federal immigration enforcement. Even the presence or possibility of such an agreement can deter residents from reporting crimes, cooperating with investigations, seeking help during emergencies, or engaging with township officials. This ultimately undermines public safety for everyone, not just our immigrant community. By prohibiting a 287G agreement, the township is allowing our police to serve and protect the entire community, not to have the added challenge of blurred lines when they must act as agents of federal immigration. This distinction definitely matters. It communicates to residents that Haverford values inclusion, fairness, due process, and the access to safety and civic life is not contingent on immigration status. Haverford Township is blessed to have a police force that is highly trained, deeply professional, and sensitive to serving all families within our community. Our officers work tirelessly to build relationships, respond with care, and ensure public safety across neighborhoods. It is precisely because of this strong foundation of trust that it is critical that the department not be placed in a position that could undermine the relationships it has worked so hard to forge. This resolution is also consistent with the preventative intent of the Human Relations Ordinance. The HRC's work is not only to respond to discrimination when it occurs, but to help shape policies that reduce the conditions under which discrimination, exclusion, and fear take root. Preventing formal collaboration with immigration enforcement at the local level is one such policy choice. Finally, we want to emphasize that this resolution does not interfere with the lawful policing or public safety. On the contrary, it strengthens both by ensuring that residents feel secure engaging with law enforcement and local government without fear of dire collateral consequences. For these reasons, the Haverford Human Relations Commission urges the township to adopt this resolution. Doing so affirms our shared commitment to belonging, trust, and the fundamental dignity of all of our township members. Thank you for your time and your leadership on this issue.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Deborah Derrickson. Forgive me, it's written that way. Thank you.
Hi. I'm speaking on behalf of both myself, Dr. Deb Cosman, 430 Manoa Road, East Manoa Road, and my husband, Dr. Mark Cosman. I want to thank the Haverford Commissioners for putting this resolution, Resolution Number 2476, the Immigration Laws Motion, on the agenda, and I'm here to express my strong support that it be approved. As a Haverford Township resident since 1993, I know that law enforcement here is professional and well-trained, and follows the laws and regulations necessary to do their jobs safely and to care for our community. I do not want my tax dollars or Haverford's resources being used to support a poorly-trained, unprofessional, and cruel, secret police force that is our current federal ICE agency. I do not believe that local law enforcement and our township should be collaborating with ICE in illegal, immoral, and reprehensible behaviors that are dangerous for all residents of this community, most especially our immigrant neighbors. I appreciate your voting to pass this resolution. By doing so, you stand on the side of democracy and constitutional protections for everyone in our township. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cosman. Our next registered speaker is Nicholas Kerber.
My name is Nicholas Kerber. I live at 811 Powder Mill Lane in the eighth ward. I'm also here to speak in favor of Resolution 2476. I do not like public speaking. I am standing here tonight because my conscience leaves me no other choice. What is being done in this country is wrong. We know it. They know it. We've seen them drag families from their homes. We've seen them take people from their friends. We've seen them split up families. They attack, they abuse, and now we've seen them kill. They do this all in the name of our safety, and every day they do it, we are less safe. What they do is not justice, it is terrorism against the American people. It is immoral, it is inexcusable, and it is inhuman. Collaboration with them in their cruelty is equally so. If we as a community allow our local authorities to collaborate with them, then we are responsible for the damage that will be done. Vote to keep ICE from interfering with our local police. Don't put that on this community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Monica Medina-McCurty.
I'm Monica Medina-McCurty. I'm in Ward Seven, Precinct Two, near Annunciation Parish. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of Resolution 2476, 2026. I've been proud to call this township home for the past 15 years, where my family and I are raising our daughter, now a high school junior. The resolution clearly and thoughtfully explains why the township should adopt a policy prohibiting any memorandum of agreement with Immigration and Customs Enforcement. From a practical standpoint, partnering with ICE under the 287G program would expose the township to significant legal and financial risk, given the agency's documented disregard for due process and civil rights in other communities. Such a partnership could lead to violations of fundamental rights, something no community should accept. Passing this resolution unanimously would be a moment of pride for my family and me. My parents immigrated to the United States, specifically to a small town in northern Minnesota, before I was born. They arrived without family support, seeking work in jobs that were going unfilled, and hoping to build a new life. They were welcomed with dignity and respect, and that experience reflected the promise of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. By voting yes, we affirm those same values here at Haverford. We commit to defending due process, protecting civil rights, and showing the world that this township stands for what it truly means to be American. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Lee Berry.
I'm Lee Sullivan-Berry. I live in the Manoa section in Ward Two. I'm a Havertonian, born and bred, grew up on Brookline Boulevard, went through Haverford Township schools, I'm sending my son there now. So I also am new to making public comment in a situation like this, and I also have come to express my very strong support for passing Resolution 2476. I wanted to point out in particular, I mean, a lot of what we've heard, I certainly endorse, but I also wanted to point out that under these 287G agreements, our Police Department would be responsible for the personnel expenses, including but not limited to salaries and benefits, local transportation, and official-issue material used in the execution of the mission. And they'd be responsible for the salaries and benefits and overtime for any of the personnel that are being trained to perform this function, this federal immigration enforcement function. And they'd be responsible for the salaries and benefits and overtime of people who are filling in for the police officer who's getting that training. And then our police officers would be responsible to ICE and be under ICE supervision, including that they would, they may be assigned and/or co-located with ICE as a task force officer. So I have to say, like, I have had encounters with our Police Department. I really appreciate the work that they do for our community and keeping us safe, and I don't want to see them, any of them, placed in this position where they are responsible to somebody other than our community whom they serve. And I don't understand why we would imagine that entering into a 287G agreement would benefit us, given that, you know, our property taxes go to pay for our public safety here. And ICE's budget, as many of us know, has just more than tripled this year. It's now up to $37.5 billion annually. That's more than all of the other federal law enforcement agencies combined. It is sufficiently funded, and it's going to increase, it's got $30 billion for personnel and operations to bring the total number of ICE agents to 30,000, which is more than three times the number of FBI agents there are in this country. They don't need to co-opt our police force to complete their mission of federal immigration enforcement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we've now exhausted our list of registered speakers, so I'll invite members of the audience who wish to speak on an agenda item at this time to please come forward and, again, state your name and indicate your residency before making your remarks. I'm actually going to start on the left-hand side here, front row. Mr. Hall?
Good evening. Todd Hall, Ward Two. I'm here to offer my thoughts on the events in Minneapolis last week, as they do have a context to immigration laws. I echo the words of my Commissioner when there was a high-profile killing in September of last year, and she said, and I quote, "Any time a person is killed, in whatever the circumstances, it is a tragedy and a loss to those who love that person and to everyone in the immediate and larger community." The situation also offered a teachable moment to our children. In a situation involving law enforcement, even if concerned about the actions of law enforcement, do not get directly involved, especially if you are operating a vehicle which is capable of becoming a weapon. Keep your distance, and if an officer tells you to do something, comply with what they ask. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Anybody else in the first row on the left-hand side? How about the second row, left-hand side? Yes, sir.
Well, from what I've heard so far, I take it this is not where I apply to get a childcare center started. So that's a joke.
Thank you. Gotcha.
It should come as no surprise to anyone.
Can you offer your name and indicate your residence?
My name is Mike Colantonio. I live on Garfield Avenue, 1132 Garfield Avenue. I have been there since 1981 and watched the community grow and prosper. To you and your predecessors, I say thank you. Keep up that work. However, allow me to state that I am not in support of this Resolution 2476. I have to read because my memory is just shot. Clearly, I am opposed to it. I am opposed to this resolution that puts my fellow citizens, my law enforcement brothers and sisters, and the future of our community at risk. And it's exactly what this proposal does. It does put them at risk. Cooperating with ICE stops the engagements at the street level, stops the engagements in neighborhoods. It puts the engagements exactly where they belong, in the detention centers. That's what ICE is asking for. That's what ICE has been doing in many states, many cities across the country. I've heard some of the arguments about the jackbooted ICE agents coming in and ripping babies from their mother and sending them back home. That's not happening, you know? Hyperbole.
I'm sorry, we are going to let everybody speak. We're gonna, thank you.
So I thank you for the same courtesy.
Yes, please, thank you.
I do find it strange that in your opening sentences in this resolution, you would choose to usurp and convolute language from the Declaration of Independence, a document written by citizens to announce to the government that we would not stand for a tyrant that threatens our sense of security, our economic stability, or our identity. Exactly the things that are at threat from illegal, from people in this country illegally. They have, our founding fathers knew it. They knew it when they were after George for it, and we have to do the same thing here. Your resolution rightly states that all individuals must enjoy equal protection of the law. However, when you add, when you added regardless of immigration status, you stepped over the line. You said now, every citizen's entitled to protection under the law, and anybody else. Well, if you're here, excuse me, if you're here legally, of course you're protected under the law, and there isn't anyone in law enforcement, from the highest federal official down to the local street cop, there isn't any one of them that wants to violate the right, that wants to violate the rights of an individual. We also want to protect, that's what we're sworn to protect, the rights of every citizen in the community, and we do that job, that is, job is done best when it's done in the confined environments. Being a sanctuary municipality encourages those looking to shield their illegal entry into this country and to mitigate...
Mr. Colantonio, I'm going to ask you to wrap up your remarks. We're at three minutes.
I'm sorry, take it.
I'm going to ask you to wrap up your remarks and make your final remark, please.
Okay, fine. I'll be glad to give my final remark, because my final remark is this. It's an oath I took as a young officer and one that I hope you all would remember well as we consider this proposition. And that's that I, Michael J. Colantonio, do solemnly swear to uphold and protect the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, both foreign and domestic. And we have to protect this country, both from foreign and domestic intrusion. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Colantonio. Okay. We're still in the second row. Anybody else in the second row? Third row, left-hand side? Yes.
John Ryan, Eighth Ward? That all I have to tell you? Okay. Been a while since I've been up here. Wow. I definitely wanted to get up and support the resolution that everybody, up until a couple of people, have not supported. And I didn't think I'd have a whole lot to say until just now. Some of the arguments you may have just heard are ridiculous. The fact of the matter is, we don't need any more, anybody else, more than our police offers, officers, to protect us in our township. We don't need to bring in an extra police force to go after what we consider illegal. If there are people in our community that aren't here legally or dangerous or criminal, our law enforcement is going to take care of it. I'm a little bit more than surprised. And if there's more people listening tonight that are going to have a similar feeling about our community and the rabid crime we have running around, and illegal people that are criminals that must be evading our police force on a daily basis, for that to be an issue, to bring in a large federal force to try and make sure that we are safe, we know that that's nothing more than a dog and pony show right now. And that's why we will not get involved with it. If anything, I will ask that our local law enforcement make sure that the untrained and dangerous ICE agents that are making a mockery of our constitution do not stray from the law. That if any crimes are committed in our township by ICE agents, I hope that they're enforced. And that's pretty much what I have to say. And I heard this slight mockery of laughing behind me as I said that. And go to school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. So it's on to the third row. Anybody else in the third row? Yes.
Good evening. Bonnie McMeans, Merwood Lane, Ward Three. I think everyone in this room can agree that none of us want criminals, illegal or undocumented immigrants who are criminals. But that's not what's happening. Clearly, ICE has overstepped. You know, President Obama was called the deporter in chief because he deported a lot of undocumented immigrants who were criminals. But when he was doing that, you weren't seeing what I view as almost armed militias patrolling streets, dragging people from their cars, zip-tying children, showing up at Home Depot and daycare centers and libraries on the hunt for people who are not breaking laws and are only here to try to forge a better life for themselves and their families. And I'll just say one more thing. I'm watching Ken Burns's documentary on the American Revolution, and it's been quite fascinating. There's been things I've learned that I didn't know before. And one of the things I learned is the Boston massacre came about because England decided to put a lot of troops on the street because colonists were protesting the Stamp Act and the tax on tea and so forth. So England's solution was to have all these troops come to Boston, start walking around in the name of, you know, protecting citizens and so forth. Well, the colonists didn't like it, and they opposed that. And that's been our history. We're not comfortable, we're not comfortable with the federal government patrolling our streets either as National Guardsmen or ICE agents or anything else. We're just, we don't like it. We haven't liked it since the beginning of the revolution. And so I support you deciding to pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to continue in the third row. Anybody else in the third row? And then the fourth row, left-hand side? Fifth row? Sixth row? Yes. Going to go to her and then you, Mr. Lee.
Hello. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Bethany Monday. I live on Lanark Avenue in Ward Two. My husband and I lead a congregation of about 150 people here in Haverford. As a faith leader in our community, I am grateful for this opportunity to speak. My husband and I lead a diverse congregation that includes many first and second-generation immigrants, some of whom are still in process of obtaining their citizenship. I have written letters in support of their naturalization. I believe that these families and others like them in our community have the right to pursue the naturalization process feeling safe and free from intimidation. Their children should be able to attend our schools without undue burden of anxiety and fear. I believe that it is my duty, as stated in Proverbs 31, to speak up for those who cannot speak for themselves. For the rights of all who are destitute, to speak up and to judge fairly, defending the rights of the poor. It is likewise our collective responsibility as a community to safeguard the physical and emotional well-being of those who live, work, and invest in our shared future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lee?
Hi. My name's Mike Lee. I'm a Haverford Township resident. I'm here to talk about an action that was passed last year that I think directly impacts the immigration thing tonight. At that time, we passed the installation of license plate readers in the township. And it collects, on every car that goes by, it collects their, all sorts of information. I think picture of a plane, the license plate numbers. And it's stored for a year in a database that we do not control. It's controlled by another group. And at that time, when this was passed, we had at least 12 residents come up, and they all said the same thing. Most of them were talking about ICE, but some were talking from the perspective of other people who felt they were targeted, that this data could be used easily to target individual groups. And this is something directly under your control. You can decide to limit the amount of data collected under this. You can decide to do away with it, which is what I think we should do. And this, so I'm hoping that we really think about the impact of collecting all this data on every resident in the township everybody goes through and keeping it and the surveillance that this type of database does. I wonder how you're going to protect that data from people that you don't want to have access to it. Thank you.
Anybody else on the left-hand side? Yes.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mary Nowicki Sullivan. I am a resident of Haverford Township in Precinct Three. I know it's a complicated, immigration is always a complicated topic that reaches a lot of different variables in different ways. I come before you as a person who is from a family of police officers and military personnel, but I'm also coming to you as a person who has worked firsthand with migrant families. And I will say that my grandfather, rest his soul, would be appalled at some of the actions that are done under the name of law. He served in Philadelphia. My uncle served in Philadelphia for many years. My mom proudly calls my grandfather a peace officer, and that's what he is. And that's what we believe as a family, that law is there to help protect and serve, whether you're a citizen or not, but to look at people as people. I love the police force. I love our military. They do a tremendous job, many people. I love children. I love our community. I love communities. And I watch these kids live in fear. When I worked out in Washington State, I watched these kids live in fear. I watched them go through their parents being taken. I watched kids who worked hard to fundraise. I would pick them up and take them to fundraising events because their families couldn't get them there, so they could go to camp overnight. These people want better for their children. We cannot fault them for that. That is the majority of the people who are here. They want better for their children. And who of us as parents wouldn't want that for our children? If we were born in a different state, in a different economic situation, in a different country, we would all want that. We want people to stand up for us, to help us, not to punish us. My grandfather would not approve of many of the actions that are done under the name of the immigration officers. He would not. Neither would my uncle. Thank you for your time, and please consider it.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Barbara White. I'm Ward Seven. And I didn't plan to speak tonight. You know, I just thought I'd come and kind of listen. And I just think we've been put into a situation that's very, very difficult. I'm called to love my neighbor, right? There's plenty of immigrants here. My grandfather was an immigrant who came legally and had to jump through a lot of hoops. A lot of his family had to go back where they came from because they were sick before they could, the rest of the family could come and be together here. And he had a, you know, they were very poor and, you know, he worked up to being a surgeon. He had the American opportunities, right? We want that for everybody. But I guess what my big concern is that so many people were let in unvetted, you know, and before people were vetted. There's a big difference because now we're faced with lots of people here, and how do you vet them? How do you vet them? Do you go pull innocent people, people who aren't doing anything? And, well, yeah, I guess we should be questioning everybody. Honestly, this might sound crazy. I'm afraid of an October 7th happening here because there's a lot of people here who, look, even if it's 1% of the immigrant population, 1% of the people who did a 9/11 and who want to do us harm, that's still millions of people. It took 19 people to take down the World Trade Center, okay? So I guess what my point is, right? These people are here. Well, they're human beings, right? And most of them are just seeking a better life like everybody else. There's a percentage of people who are not. There's a percentage of people, and we're naive to think that there aren't people here who want to hurt us badly. So by becoming sanctuary anything, my fear is we're inviting them to be here. Come here, safe place to kind of, like, be under the radar. And I just think we have to be intelligent about what we're doing and support our police, right? I mean, but our police, I believe, should be also supporting the federal officers too. I get a little confused about the part, like, you know, they're, for criminal matters, we would do that, you know? It's criminal to be here illegally too. So, yeah, thanks for your respect because I didn't interrupt anybody else when they talked, you know? But anyway, that's what I think we really need to seriously consider while we take care of the people around us, right? Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else on the left-hand side? And we're moving over to the right-hand side, front row. Yes.
Good evening. My name is Mara O'Brien. I'm in Ward Six. And I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Haverford Town Area Community Action Network. It's the Immigration and Refugees Action Group. HCAN is an all-volunteer, local grassroots organization with hundreds of participants who are residents of Haverford Township. HCAN's Immigration and Refugee Action Group strongly supports Proposed Resolution 2476, a resolution that would formally prohibit the police department from entering into 287G agreements or participating in ICE civil immigration enforcement without a warrant. We support this resolution as a necessary step in our community because we know how agreements under 287G have undermined civil liberties, diminished public trust in law enforcement, imposed fiscal burdens on local governments, and made communities less safe. We have watched in horror as masked ICE agents have increasingly relied on violence, which has turned deadly, as in the recent case of Renee Nicole Good, who was fatally shot by an ICE officer last week. Our position is grounded in the experiences of our immigrant neighbors who are afraid in our communities and in specific research, which shows that ICE cooperation with local law enforcement undermines trust in police and discourages immigrants from reporting crime. Moreover, aggressive and unlawful ICE actions make our communities far less safe. Despite ongoing claims that ICE is targeting cartels and violent offenders, the data released by ICE shows that as immigration enforcement increases, the percentage of those arrested who are convicted of crime decreases. Collaborating with ICE also comes at a cost to local taxpayers. For example, taxpayers in Charleston County, North Carolina, paid an estimated $4 million per year in costs for its 287G agreement. A study by the North Carolina Justice Center found that the cumulative cost of collaborating with ICE over a decade was at least $81.7 million. And it's not at all clear that whatever incentives being offered for ICE collaboration would make up for these costs. We're concerned that ICE enforcement patterns, including aggression, abuse of force, intimidation, and racial profiling, threatens the civil liberties of all community members while also exposing local law enforcement agencies to new legal liabilities. For example, a key founding of a 2022 ACLU report showed that at least 65% of 287G participating agencies had records of a pattern of racial profiling and other civil rights violations, including excessive use of force. For all these reasons, we believe that adopting this formal resolution is necessary in order to protect the safety and civil liberties of everyone in our community. We respectfully urge all members of the Haverford Township Commission to vote in favor. Thank you for considering.
Thank you. Anybody else in the front row on the right-hand side? Second row? Oh, I'm sorry. We do have somebody in the front row. Thank you.
Hi. Name's Chris Cobal. I'm from the Bon Air section. I saw my email today and that there was, Haverford Township decided they wanted to be a sanctuary township. That's what I saw, and I don't like it. You know, we, everybody feels. But we had 20 million people come across the border in the past four years.
Sir, please direct your comments to the board.
Well, I will.
Thank you.
All right? So all that seems like it's somewhere else. In Pennsylvania alone, we have a million at least. And 300,000 people as of today could probably be deported right out of Philadelphia. There's about 960,000 illegal or undocumented right in Philadelphia County. And as soon as you say, okay, we are sanctuary township, you're right next door. Here they come. All right? So I do agree that we don't necessarily have to have a 287G. I'm okay with that. I'm, some of the language that's in here, I redlined it like crazy. I think some of it needs to be twisted. For instance, yes, they're saying- For instance, yes, they're saying that coming across the border first time is a civil offense. But if you kick that and you come over the second time, that's a criminal offense. How do you know if that person is, didn't have that criminal offense? If you're not going to engage with them, you're not going to find out. In Minnesota, they pulled the police force off, and guess what? That lady got shot because the police force was not there. All right? So, yeah, thank you. So we all feel, and it's a really tough thing, but I don't think you want to announce yourself as a sanctuary township. You're inviting it. Don't do it. Please, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the first row on the right-hand side? Second row, ma'am.
I'm Hannah Campbell, 13 block of Robinson Avenue. Before I came tonight, I had numerous people of both political parties tell me, I'm wasting my time, because the board has their mind made up before I open my mouth. I hope I'm wrong. I've lived in Haverford Township for 48 years. I want to know if anybody in this room has had a 13-year-old niece raped by an 18-year-old illegal migrant? Anybody? Raise your hand. Tell me if you would feel differently if you did. Now, I added on to my notes, he could have been an American, right? Yeah, he could have been, right? Well, guess what? The fact that we didn't have any information on him, because he was adopted and lied by the courts, this SOB raped my niece, and I can't tell you the hell that is for family. We went to court. Oh, wow, the judge gave him a second chance. Oh, guess what he did? He went on to impregnate three more women, has six children that he ignores and doesn't pay support for, and the police have been called to that wonderful house numerous times for every kind of abuse. That's one. I approve of ICE coming to Haverford Town for the following reasons. I want to know who is here, and they need to know I'm here. We have an online website for sexual abuses of children. We have drug enforcement agents that list drug dealers, okay? Don't we want to know who might hurt and kill our children? Well, damn it, we need to know who else is here with a criminal background. I say, let's compromise. You don't like the big bad ICE? You don't like them? Have five members vetted by the board or people. What are you going to do? We're going with you, okay? Just five. And tell them to have one week. That's all. We're not Minneapolis. For a proclamation from this little county that we will not enable, it's laughable. It's laughable.
I'm going to ask you to wrap up your remarks.
Well, please.
Thank you.
We have thousands of migrants who have not been vetted. Many Irish came here with green cards. Remember them? Six months? Bye-bye. You're out. And yet, we had their addresses, their jobs, we had their families. They had to jump through hoops to get here, and they had to leave when their time was up. I don't care what nationality you are. Come in legally, become a citizen, and do good. All illegal immigrants are not criminals. It's unfair to them to be assumed they are. Who are we to judge? We have sinners and criminals in our own, in our own country. Finally, I'm flying to California soon. Guess what? I need a real ID, and that includes my driver's license, marriage license, birth certificate, everything I know for me to get on a plane. Now, if an airline requires that for less than 200 passengers, I don't know why we don't know who's in our township. That is ICE's job, whether you like them, hate them, or not.
Thank you so much, Ms. Campbell.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay. Second row, Mr. Shelton.
My 13-year-old niece. I thought it was so tough.
Excuse me. Excuse me. We're going to maintain decorum here.
Chris Shelton, Ward Eight. I want to amplify something that Speaker touched on, which is the students, young people of our township. In 2018, the school district of Haverford Township adopted a resolution, a welcoming schools resolution, in which, among other things, the district pledged to educate all students, irregardless of immigration status. And I think that if our police department were to enter any kind of agreement with ICE, that would present some difficulties, where we would, we could potentially have, you know, our students become at risk, and, you know, potentially some of the violence we've seen. And so I would ask the Board of Commissioners to support the resolution and align with the goals of the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the second row on the right-hand side? Third row, right-hand side? Yes.
Hi there. My name is Peter Webb. I live in Ward Six. I did not prepare to speak. I am simply here to state my support for the Resolution 2476. Thank you.
Anybody else in that row? Moving on to the next row. I guess that's the fourth row? Am I counting properly? Fourth row? Fifth row?
Good evening. Brian Vance, North Concord Avenue, Ninth Ward. Wasn't planning on coming here tonight, but I read the resolution, and I'm just a little confused about the need for it. There's no requirement that you enter into 287G, so it strikes me that the resolution saying we're not going to do this is nothing but performance art. And why is that what we're engaged in? I am, I offer no opinion on the wisdom or lack thereof of the administrations at immigration enforcement policy, other than to note that they have this authority, they've elected to use it, it's legal, it's proper, whether we agree with it or not. Everything, my view as an attorney, that they've done so far, with all due respect, including the tragedy of Minnesota, was almost, well, almost be found proper, if tragic. What I don't understand about, what I read about the resolution, was, I get the fact that you're not going to enter into 287G. I don't get the fact, it says, neither enable ICE-related civil enforcement, nor enter into the ICE program. I don't know what the board means by the words, enable ICE-related civil enforcement actions. It strikes me as vague. It strikes me as, as almost meaningless. Second thing I don't really understand, is I appreciate the fact that the police department will continue to, quote, "enforce all applicable federal, state, and local laws." However, as I go down, it says that the township will continue to fully comply with all applicable state and local laws. The word "federal" being missing in that paragraph. I don't understand the omission, and I would hope you would explain it. The last thing I want to point out is, again, I have no dog in this fight as far as the wisdom of this policy. I do know, in my 70 years, particularly since 2009, I've seen successive presidential administrations, begin with Obama, carrying into Trump, Biden, and O'Biden, and then Trump again, using every tool that they have in their box to bully and coerce local governments into complying with their wishes, through the use of litigation, to sue the townships, to sue the counties, to sue the states, or to cut off the funding of various programs, which then require the local governments to sue the federal government to re-implement those programs. I would like to know what due diligence this board has conducted, the discussions they've had with the solicitor, to know, have you aired out the possibility of actions by the federal government which will cost this township either in loss funding, lawsuits to retrieve that funding, or defending the actions that the board has taken in response to federal lawsuits? Litigation is expensive, and whether you win or you lose, I can tell you, as a retired attorney who has litigated for decades, that everyone loses in litigation, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in that row?
My name is Lynda Mitchell, and I live in Ward Three. And I had absolutely no intention of speaking tonight. So I'm ill-prepared, but I feel the need to say a few things. And I do wish I wasn't following an attorney, but here we go. And I hope everyone in the room listens, because I think it may be helpful for both sides. Illegal entry occurs at the moment a person crosses the U.S. border without authorization or evades inspection. A first-time improper entry is a federal misdemeanor. The offense is complete at entry and is not a continuing crime. U.S. law separates criminal punishment from immigration enforcement. Paying a fine or serving jail time for illegal entry does not legalize immigration status. Immigration enforcement proceeds through civil removal proceedings. Once physically present in the United States, a noncitizen is entitled to due process. This includes notice of charges, a hearing before an immigration judge, the opportunity to present evidence, apply for relief and appeal, adverse decisions. The noncitizen bears the burden of establishing date of entry, particularly for asylum deadlines. Proof may include government records, third-party documents, travel records, affidavits, or credible testimony when documents are unavailable. Most asylum applications must be filed within one year of the applicant's last entry into the United States. Exceptions exist for changed circumstances or extraordinary circumstances. Illegal immigration becomes a national security issue when linked to terrorism, espionage, or hostile foreign activity. In those cases, counterterrorism and national security authorities apply instead of ordinary immigration enforcement. If an undocumented individual commits a local crime, Pennsylvania law enforcement rests and prosecutes the individual under state law, like any other offender. Immigration status does not provide immunity from criminal prosecution. Local police in Pennsylvania enforce state criminal law, but do not enforce civil immigration law. They may not arrest or detain individuals solely based on immigration status. Local law enforcement must cooperate with federal authorities when presented with valid criminal process, including federal arrest warrants, subpoenas, or court orders. Federal criminal law supersedes local discretion, per PA law. Local police are not required to honor ICE administrative detainers without judicial warrants. Holding an individual solely for civil immigration reasons may violate constitutional protections. Delaware County enforces Pennsylvania criminal law, cooperates with federal criminal warrants, and does not enforce civil immigration law or hold individuals solely on ICE administrative detainers without judicial authorization. Illegal entry is criminal at the moment of crossing, but immigration enforcement afterward is civil.
I'm going to ask you to wrap up your remarks.
Due process applies once a person is inside the United States. Federal criminal authority overrides local discretion, while civil immigration enforcement remains federal only. The reason why I'm for my final comment in closing this, per your request, is, as a mother of five, I always tell my children to make all decisions and responses, and thoughtful responses, not based on emotion, but clearly on fact. Today, tonight, rather, I've witnessed a very lack of factual information coming from many, and a very wonderful display of complete emotion not based on this fact. I think we'll see what already exists, per the law of Pennsylvania, the state of Pennsylvania and Delaware County already exists, and I can't help but feel, the perpetuation of such a resolution is just grandstanding on the emotions of the occurrence in Minnesota. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Anybody else in that row? Anybody else behind the next row?
Hi there. Melissa Raffel, Kenmore Road, Seventh Ward. I, too, would have dressed better had I planned on speaking tonight. But because I didn't send an email earlier, I thought it was really important that I made sure my voice was heard tonight. Like many others, I strongly support the resolution preventing our local police from collaborating with ICE. Such partnerships would waste township resources that should be used to protect and serve our residents, not to carry out federal immigration enforcement. Collaboration with ICE jeopardizes public safety by creating fear among our neighbors, fear that keeps people from reporting crimes, from seeking help, or participating in community life. Our township's duty is to safeguard every resident, regardless of where they were born. Standing against this collaboration isn't just about budgets, it's about protecting the safety, dignity, and unity of our entire community. Real quickly to the board, when you go to vote on this, for those of us, for those of us who maybe have not read the entire resolution, if you could please address whether the resolution actually refers to us as a sanctuary city, that would be super helpful. Finally, a large portion of my family were in concentration camps in the Holocaust. The words and actions in this country, and in this room tonight, too, scarily familiar. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in that last row? Final row there? No? Anybody on the back? No? Anybody else in this audience? I'm opening it up. Anybody want to make any final remarks?
Can I ask you just a simple question? Do you have a read on how many?
I'm going to make this one exception, but we're not going to do a back and forth. You can ask your question, and that's it. Let's go.
Not done a back and forth. Simply, this is, we've never had this, and all of a sudden, here it is. Do we have a read on how many undocumented persons are in Haverford Township that's driving this?
Thank you.
Do you have a number?
Thank you. Yes.
Stephen Pierce, Eighth Ward. I'm historian, and I just want to just lay this out real quick. In the Declaration of Independence, which we are celebrating the 250th anniversary of, in one paragraph, it says, "He, King George, has endeavored to prevent the population of these states for the purpose of obstructing the laws of naturalization of foreigners, refusing to pass others to encourage their migrations hither, and raising the conditions of new appropriations of lands." That is in our declaration, saying that the king was preventing us from taking in new migrants. I also would like to say that there is the Fugitive Slave Act of 1850. What did Pennsylvania do? They passed something called personal liberty laws, said that local police should not be aiding with federal law enforcement, trying to take escaped slaves back to their masters. We have precedent for this. And if you refer this today, I think that you are going to be joining in the great history of this country of resisting tyranny in its different forms. I'd also like to say, because nobody wants to point this out, we're trying to make it so that people who might not have the proper documentation but want to be American citizens, if they see a crime being committed in our community, they can go to our brave law enforcement officers without having the fear of being deported. You want someone who goes to them, prevents a crime, or... or actually tells that crime took place, and then for the actions of them doing that courageous thing for them to be deported next? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. One last time. Anybody else have any comments they'd like to make? I'm hearing none. Thank you so much to everyone for coming tonight and participating in public comment. At this time, I'll open the floor up to my colleagues for response. Anybody who wishes to speak and offer a response to any of the questions or the comments? Now, let me remind you all that we are going to be voting on the resolution a little bit later, and my colleagues will have the opportunity to speak on this matter at that time as well. So with that, any remarks based off of public comment?
Madam President, I was just wondering if we could, the board could agree to move this resolution up. That way, people could speak now. Most of this audience is here to see what we do about this. I know that is out of order, and it's not something I mentioned to you earlier, but having heard this crowd, seen this crowd, and knowing that people on this board have something to say, and my first impulse was going to be to tell you that I would postpone my comments until we got to it in the agenda. I wonder whether or not Madam President agrees that we could move this ahead in the agenda.
Thank you. Just for formality's sake, is there a second to that suggestion? Yes, motion, please. Is there a second? Comments related to that? All those in favor of moving that up, please say aye. Any objections? Say nay. Any abstentions? We'll move that up then. Thank you so much. All right, so moving on to resolution. Yes.
If we're going to be moving directly into the resolution, I would just, we had a lengthy comment period. Can I just ask for a two-minute recess?
Wait, could we go through the fair update first and then get to the...
No, we just voted on that. So that said, that said, here's what I'm going to do. Any final comments from my colleagues regarding any remarks made during public comment? Then we'll move on to the resolution.
Well, I mean, I assume people are just going to address the comments when they address their thoughts on this. I would say Mr. Lee did bring up one issue that was not...
That's right.
Not directly, I mean, it was related to the resolution, but he brought up the issue of the license plate readers. That was a, I appreciate you bringing that up. And there was an article of some significance circulated among us commissioners recently about those issues. It's something I take very seriously, and we are asking for more information from that company that does gather that information. It really is a tool that is used for purposes of tracking down a specific car that has been involved in a crime. But your concerns are legitimate and are concerns that have been expressed both before and after we passed that. And so I just wanted to let you know that I take those comments very seriously, and they have been recently discussed and are being reexamined.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes. Anybody else? Actually, to that point, to Mr. Lee's remarks, Chief Ayala, may I ask you if the data is shared as was suggested by Mr. Lee?
The tag readers, the license plate readers?
That's correct, for the license plate readers.
With police departments. It doesn't go anywhere else. I looked into that last week at the commissioner's request, and the company that we are contracted with is an internal retention. Internal retention, it's on, so.
Okay.
Retention only. And when we put a vehicle into the system, we're looking for that vehicle that had committed a crime.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else on this board wish to speak? Okay, then let's move on to the resolution. However, I did hear from Commissioner Gondak a motion or a request to have a two-minute recess. Mr. Gondak, will you make a motion?
Sure. Motion for a two-minute recess.
I'll second.
All those in favor of a two-minute recess, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Or any? This is circus here, folks. All right, then we're going to take a two-minute recess. Thank you. Thank you. We're resuming our meeting. Thank you so much. I will now entertain a motion related to Resolution Number 2476-2026.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2476-2026, establishing an official policy that law enforcement officers and resources of Haverford Township shall not be engaged in the enforcement of noncriminal federal immigration laws.
Second.
I've heard a motion in second. The motion is now open for discussion. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues on this board related to this resolution?
Madam President.
Yes, Commissioner Holmes.
Madam President, there are a couple just quick points that I want to make that were raised during the conversation today and comments from different people. Number one, this is very clear. The United States Constitution protects all persons in the United States, whether they're citizens or not. And due process applies to everybody who ends up in our court systems or otherwise subject to any type of executive, legislative, or judicial action. And so to the extent that anybody thinks the Constitution stops at our citizenship, it does not. It protects everybody. Statistically speaking, there is no evidence that undocumented immigrants have any greater propensity. In fact, statistics indicate that they have less proportionality of committing crimes than American citizens do. And what unfortunately is happening in this situation is that oftentimes, people who are playing by the rules, who have gone to a hearing or otherwise are doing everything they're supposed to do to successfully prosecute their ability to become an American citizen, are being captured at their hearings or before them in the hallways of these courtrooms. This is happening, no question, disproportionately to people with brown and black skin. And now Native Americans are under constant scrutiny. And this is, other than the horrors of Minneapolis this week, this is not something that the white community has to deal with. But it is something that I, as a white member of this board, Caucasian member of this board, certainly feel the need to address. There's a lot of questions about sanctuary cities. There's no magic to a sanctuary city. There isn't a legal significance to that. That's a generic term that's been used for actions that different municipalities take to, whether it's to protect undocumented immigrants or whether it's to thwart federal immigration laws. Our resolution is written with a great degree of specificity so that it is not generic. It makes very clear, as the law indicates, that the governing body of a municipality has the sole power to determine whether or not its police department may enter into agreements, including a 287 agreement, to work with ICE in the civil enforcement of the immigration laws. And that is the actions that we're taking. Twenty-eight years ago, I moved into this township. Twenty-eight years ago, on the day that I moved, it turned out as we were moving in that my family and I, my wife and my son Jack, who wasn't yet one, actually needed the police department's help that day. That was my first interaction with the Haverford Police Department. Twenty-eight years later, and 21 years as a commissioner of this board, I have nothing but great things and great experiences with the Haverford Police Department. That is not an accident. I have lived in this township under three chiefs and an acting chief whose leadership, and a deputy chief who you just heard of earlier this evening with extraordinary credentials, extraordinary heroism, extraordinary service to this township. I have worked under a police department that has an extraordinary relationship with our citizens, a reputation that it has deserved and a reputation that it has continually earned under training, up-to-date training, and training that has progressed and modernized as our society has progressed and modernized. And I applaud the police for that. And the last thing I want to see happen is that that police department and our relationship with that police department be hurt by the reckless and criminal activity of ICE. And we have the power to prevent that. And to state as a policy in this township that we won't play along with that. We won't comply. And spoiler alert, I will be voting for this resolution for exactly that reason. I think it is my duty. A number of people did speak against the resolution tonight. A number of constituents have written to me or have otherwise contacted me to express their opposition to this. They are greatly outnumbered by the people who have voted in support. But I have said, and I've said this from the time I took this office, I don't count the votes and see what has more support and then cast my vote that way. I cast my vote based on my judgment and on my discretion. And it is my judgment and my discretion that this agreement... Is that like mood lighting?
Yes.
You're not a man to play me off. Yeah. So I just want to say that one of the criticisms have been to some of my colleagues and to me that we should stay in our lanes. I view this very much as our lane. We are taking a step, a step empowered under federal law and under state and local law, to state a policy that we think protects this township and protects its police department and protects the reputation they've rightly earned and protects all of you from the conduct that we've seen elsewhere. I can't stop what happened in Minneapolis, but I can do anything I can to stop it from happening in Haverford Township tonight. This is one of those steps I can take. I will take it proudly. That's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes. Do any of my colleagues have any comments?
Ladies first? Sure? Okay. Okay, I guess I'll go. Piss a lot of people off, but I'm going to speak what I feel is the truth. First off, I have a lot of respect for my colleagues on this board, whether I agree with them or I don't agree with them. But I do have a lot of respect for them, and I do know that deep down what they are doing and how they cast their votes tonight are true to their own hearts and their beliefs and what they feel is in the best interest of this township. I absolutely feel that all law enforcement, whether state, local, or federal, should be held to the highest standard. They should receive the highest level of training to adhere to that standard, and they should take all of their oaths as seriously as is required by their jobs, and they should fulfill those roles to the best of their ability. And in my personal belief, I believe that our local township does that very, very, very well and is a leader in that particular regard. That being said, immigration, I may drown on a little bit here, but immigration is a very complex topic. It's also a very divisive topic, and because of its divisiveness, it can be very inflammatory. And unfortunately, in our country, politicians on both sides of the aisle, Republicans and Democrats, conservatives and liberals, have spent more time in recent years politicizing this particular topic for cheap one-liners that they can use for fundraising emails rather than actually coming together and coming to a comprehensive solution to what is a significant problem for this country. As a result of that, I feel that a lot of people base their opinions on not necessarily facts, but misconstrued information or possibly just misunderstandings of information. In that regard, I do think it is important to highlight a couple of things. One, 287G is an opt-in program. We do not participate in it. We are not being asked to participate in it. It is my understanding, and after I'm done speaking, if someone on the board or the chief would like to correct me, I am not aware of the chief of police who would initiate a request to opt into 287G has ever entertained the idea of entering into a 287G arrangement. The procedure would be for the chief to request it, and then for us to vote on it because it is a binding agreement. That being said, 287G is actually not one program. It's actual several programs. And to be honest with you, if a proposal had come to this board asking to opt into one of those programs, out of the four that I've seen, one doesn't apply to us. One, I may support. One, I absolutely would not support. And the other, I got to be honest with you, I just don't know enough about. But the whole concept would be that a full-blown proposal would have to come for this board to be fully vetted on all of its facts and details. And then at the conclusion of that, a vote would be made on whether to agree to it or not. We're not doing that. That's not what's before us. And as a result, I am not going to support this resolution. And the reason why I'm not going to support this resolution is really twofold. And I feel that it's very important that I make clear the reasons being. One is I am not a particular fan of political theater. I believe that if you're going to act, you act with substance. Substance would be coming up here and telling our state, not our state, I apologize, our federal legislatures, both Republicans and Democrats, to get their heads out of their asses, come together, and reach meaningful immigration reform that also reforms the immigration court system and reforms immigration enforcement through ICE and its other federal partners. That's not what we're doing here. What we're doing here is basically saying we're not going to do something that we don't do. Logically, it's no different than the futile effect of trying to prove a negative. And I just don't support those types of actions. The other issue that I have with this particular resolution is I find that a lot of the particular hostility that arises on this part, in this topic, is the result of a confusion or a confusion, I'll say confusion, between people and policy. ICE is people, immigration laws, policy. And I feel that sometimes what belongs in each of those particular camps gets distorted, and sometimes that gets distorted completely unintentionally and accidentally by language, some of which can be quite complicated. And I personally, in reviewing the language of this resolution, which unfortunately I only received this past Friday night after some of my constituents had actually gotten a copy of it, when I got it, I felt that some of the language was not appropriate and would add to the confusion, which adds to the division, which adds to the combustion of the situation. And for those reasons, while I respect my colleagues for their positions on this particular matter and this divisive topic, I cannot and I will not support this particular resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner Gondak. Further comments from my colleagues?
Madam President.
Yes, Commissioner Cavender.
Thank you. I want to thank you and my colleagues on the board for considering this resolution and taking it seriously. I will support the resolution because I believe it achieves three important and appropriate things for Haverford Township. First, this resolution is a clear statement about our community's values and our constitutional obligations. Every individual in Haverford Township is entitled to equal protection of the law under the Fourth Amendment, which protects against unreasonable search and seizure. These principles are essential for our government to earn the public's trust. Secondly, this resolution affirms our police department's current practice. Haverford Township does not participate in the federal 287G program, and our officers have not engaged in civil immigration enforcement. There are no plans to do so. This resolution is a clear statement of support for our chief, our deputy chief, and the entire police department. Our officers continue to remain focused on local public safety and not federal civil enforcement roles. I stand squarely behind our police department and have full confidence in our leaders and officers in the department. Third, this resolution draws a necessary and prudent boundary in the context of immigration enforcement today in the United States. In most cases, being present in the United States, as some people have mentioned, without documentation is a civil violation, not a criminal offense. No law requires municipal police to assist ICE with civil enforcement. So this resolution chooses clarity. But most importantly, government, and this includes law enforcement, exists to create safety, stability, and trust. When people are afraid of their own government, afraid to call the police, report a crime, or show up at school, work, or church, that trust breaks down. Immigration enforcement is the responsibility of the federal government. I agree with my colleague, Commissioner Gondak, on that. It must be carried out lawfully and with humanity. That responsibility should not be pushed on municipalities and local police departments, whose role is to serve their neighbors. Our political leaders in Washington have had at least 20 years to come up with effective immigration policy. And the vacuum that has been created by not having a policy is being filled by ICE, whose budget now rivals the FBI's. So enforcing the law is important. I also think enforcing the law in a humane way, a kind way, and an honest way, and a legal way, is important. legal way is important. ICE does not need the assistance of our local government, and they have been encouraging local municipalities to partner. The number of municipalities that have joined onto these agreements has increased by more than 600% since in 2025, starting in 2025. And I ask the question, since they don't need the assistance of local officers, you have to ask, why do they want the local officers to be part of their enforcement activities? There's an active recruitment by ICE of local municipalities. Haverford Township should not be part of this fear. We should protect public safety, uphold the Constitution, and treat our neighbors with dignity. And while this doesn't change our current practice, I think that the effect it has on the people in our township who are very scared, and I have to say, I look out and I don't think it's any of us in this room, frankly, this matters. It matters that we say this. It matters that we stand up for our values as a township when we see something that is wrong. Local government takes place in person, face-to-face. We know our neighbors. I know my constituents. That trust matters. And for those reasons, I will be voting yes on this resolution, and I encourage my fellow commissioners to do the same. Thank you.
Any other of my colleagues have any comments?
Sure. I I'll be brief, as there's been a lot of words shared about this already tonight. And like Commissioner Gondek, I respect his opinion and believe, as I've stated multiple times over the last several meetings that I've ever been on this board, those things that they think is in the best interest of the township. I guess I I guess I would disagree in one respect significantly that in referring this to an opt-in type of agreement, the implication is essentially that we could wait until ICE essentially showed up in the town and then we would have this time to decide whether we wanted to enter into this agreement or not. And I just don't see how how that is a logical approach, given everything that has happened in this country in the last year, to imply that if ICE were to come to Delaware County or to Philadelphia or to Haverford Town specifically, that would there be this process whereby they would contact our police and then our police would come before our board and maybe we'd have a work session to discuss it and then we'd talk about it next week. I just don't see that as practical. So from a very practical perspective, I think it is important that we state unequivocally that we would not enter into one of these agreements. And there's been reasons that Commissioner Holmes eloquently shared and Commissioner Cavender eloquently shared, and I would agree with them. I'd also just like to, the last week, I think, has been incredibly taxing on a lot of people in America, and a couple of people made reference to the behavior in Minnesota and the actions in Minnesota. And this resolution isn't in response to that, but I think it's important to note that I would just speak to my friends and my neighbors that live in this community that may be supportive of ICE or may think that everything that happened, you are my friends and neighbors too, and I understand that. And I just ask that you take a step back. There should be something that we can all agree on. And a 37-year-old mother driving a car was shot in the face three times. I don't I don't I don't know your reasons for why you may support the administration or why you might support ICE.
A 13-year-old niece was raped. We're not gonna do that. We're gonna maintain decorum. Thank you.
But on some level, we should all be able to appreciate that none of us wanted to see a 37-year-old mother in a car get shot. No one has said she was committing a crime. No one said that she was she had come into this country illegally. No one was saying that it had anything to do with immigration. And none of us should want that to happen at any point. None of us should want armed militia in the streets shooting U.S. citizens at any point. And that is something we should all be able to agree on. And I wish we could take take a step back from the animosity and the yelling across the table at one another and just accept that as Americans, that is should not be our goal, and that is not America. That is.
Please remove yourself. Thank you so much. Thank you.
And no disagreement with me, with a Haverford police officer, with an ICE agent, no disagreement or blowing a whistle or saying that I don't agree with what you're doing should ever lead to someone being shot by a trained officer of the federal government. And that is something simple that really shouldn't be that complicated. And somehow it is in 2026. That's all I have to say.
Do any of my other colleagues have any comments?
I just have a brief comment, just for a point of clarification, kind of going to one of my original points. And that is if the procedure, and I just want to clarify this for people as to what this resolution actually is or isn't. If the procedure for ICE, if ICE were to ever come to Haverford Township, if the procedure for ICE to come to Haverford Township was as was laid out as Commissioner McCluskey had indicated, then I may have somewhat of a different view on proactive versus reactive approaches and the implications of this particular resolution. However, I think it's important for people to understand that regardless of whether this resolution is passed or not, this resolution deals with a very specific program in the federal law that applies to local law enforcement and their ability to obtain jurisdiction over federal immigration matters in various degrees. Like I said, there are four programs, at least four, and each program has different nuances. We don't need to go into any of that. It's irrelevant for what I'm saying. What is relevant is this, is the program that we're talking about applies to local law enforcement carrying out immigration duties. It does not have anything whatsoever to do with ICE. Whether we approve this or we disapprove this, ICE can, if they want, at any point in time, come into our township and conduct their own activities, and there is nothing from a legal point of view that we can do to stop it, absent, again, holding our federal representatives accountable for addressing the situation. But I just think people, there's a, I believe there's a misconception that if we pass this resolution, ICE can't come and have for township. And I need to clarify that that's just unfortunately or fortunately, depending on how you look at it, not the case.
Yeah, and if I if I implied that, Commissioner Gondek, I did not, that was not my intent at all. My intent was simply to say that I wasn't going to wait for the police to be put in a position where they were going to be asked to decide whether they were going to cooperate as a 287 agreement would in the moment. So as opposed to waiting to decide whether we're they're going to cooperate with ICE. You're absolutely right. There's nothing, there's nothing about this resolution or not signing an agreement or an agreement that would prevent ICE from coming.
Well, let's be, let's be clear on something. ICE still has to operate within the law, and we're dealing with this now and we're dealing with this in Minneapolis. Look, folks shake their hands, but this is, this is me speaking aspirationally as an American citizen, okay? If we all saw Minneapolis and and folks have differing views on that, everybody knows my view on that. But, you know, change those circumstances and somebody just walks up and just shoots somebody who's who's blowing a whistle in their face, okay? State law, local law, federal law still governs these people. So the idea that what we're doing is meaningless because ICE could come here and Haverford Township and do whatever it wants, ICE can't come into Haverford Township and do whatever it wants. And our police department, the state police, anybody empowered to enforce the law in Haverford Township has the ability to stand up to unlawful, unconstitutional, illegal, thuggish behavior. And that's, that's, that's always the law, and that's not going to change. What we do have the power, what we're doing, you can call it theater, if you want to call it, I just call it doing my job, which is to say, right now, we have the ability to establish a policy that says, not us, not our PD, not our police, not our, not our police department, and not our town. And that's the step we're taking. So is it symbolic? Sure. If ICE comes a year from now and I'm dead and somebody else is in this seat and they have very different views than I do, and they're very persuasive, township could do something different a year from now. But right now, while I'm empowered to do this, I'm doing my best and advocating my hardest to make sure this happens. And this did not happen last January, folks. This was not put up for consideration last February or last March. It is January of '26, and for one year, we have watched this increasingly thuggish, tyrannical behavior. So any benefit of the doubt that every branch of law enforcement might be entitled to has been flushed down the toilet by ICE. So they don't get the benefit of the doubt from me or from public officials who feel like I do, that whatever respect they started with by taking an oath and saying that uphold the law and then completely ignored and acted the way they did, that they're entitled to any discretion or any benefit of the doubt at all. They're not, not in this township, not while I'm here.
Thank you. Further comment?
Madam President.
Yes, Commissioner Forrest Grop.
So I've spent a lot of time in Minneapolis. My mother moved there around 2000. That's where she spent her retirement after teaching middle school for 30 years. I've been there a lot. I've driven Portland Avenue, where the woman was shot, where Renee Good was shot. I've driven, I know that area. Powderhorn Park is three blocks away from where Renee Good was shot. I've seen those houses. They look a lot like our houses. They're single-family houses. They're well-cared-for. People are walking up and down the street. They're taking their kids to school. That community could be our community. Where Renee Good was shot is 4.3 miles from where my mom used to live and now where my stepdad lives. Also, very close to where my mom lived, my stepdad lived, only 4.1 miles is Annunciation Church, where on August 27th, on Wednesday, two children died when someone shot up their church. So all these things that are happening in Minneapolis, I feel like they're happening here in Haverford Township, because that community is not so different from us. People there look a lot like us, except frankly, in the winter, they're wearing much better boots and much better coats and a lot more scarves and mittens. And so when I think about this resolution, I think about all those people in Minneapolis who are being subjected to ICE's raids and searches and demands and the fear that they live under. And I do not want that fear here in our township, where it can continue to prey the community bonds that we should have with each other. And that's what makes me saddest about the last year, actually years, that we have lost touch with each other, that we go out of the door and we don't always see the people we meet as friendly to us. And so I would hope that we could begin, little by little, extending out those hands of friendship and those smiles to everyone so we can mend the community bonds that make our township great. And one of those bonds is the bonds between our residents, whoever they may be, and our wonderful police department, whom we all trust to help us when we're in trouble, no matter who we are or what we need or how small or large the complaint is or the issue. We need to have trust between our residents and our police department. And I think codifying this policy, this unwritten policy that the police department has been following, that passing this resolution and codifying it affirms to our community that they can trust each other and they can trust the police department to protect everyone here. So I really am concerned, I'm speaking, this is a little bit of what I planned for my end of the meeting remarks, but I'm very concerned about how the fabric of our community and our nation has been torn. And we need to remember that we are all individuals who have children and friends. So when I'm driving down a street and I see some teenager crossing in front of me and he's like, why is that kid taking so long? I think, Sherry, Sherry, somebody loves that child, so be a little more patient. I think we all need to be a lot more patient with each other and listen. So while that woman said that our minds are made up, that's not actually true, because we all, I listen very carefully to everyone, and I had a firm thought about where my heart would be, my vote would be on this resolution. But I was swayed back and forth, listening to people and listening to my fellow commissioners. So I think it's very important that we listen and care and look for the good in others so that we can heal as a community and as a nation, because that's the only way we're going to move forward. And therefore, I will be supporting this resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner Forrest Grop. Further comments?
Then I'll just offer my remarks to say, I want to start by being very clear that I have full confidence of our Haverford Township Police Department, their professionalism, their integrity, and their judgment. What I see this as is a proactive measure, provides clarity, consistency, and lawful direction so that they're never put in an impossible situation. What this resolution says is clear to me. Haverford Township Police will continue to enforce all criminal laws, but they'll never be used as agents of federal civil immigration enforcement unless there's a judicial warrant signed by a judge. Commissioner Cavender had three things she mentioned. Well, I also have three things that I think that this resolution does all at once. It protects civil liberties by ensuring that no one in the township is detained without a judicial warrant. It protects public safety by making sure residents can report crimes, cooperate with police, and seek help without fear that local law enforcement will become a pipeline to deportation. And it protects our police officers by giving them clear, lawful direction instead of leaving them stuck between federal civil requests and Pennsylvania constitutional standards. We're not refusing to cooperate with federal law enforcement on criminal matters. We're not creating a sanctuary. We are simply saying that Haverford Township will not volunteer its officers, its time, its resources to enforce federal civil immigration law, because that's not our role. It's not required by law. Our job as a township is to keep people safe, uphold the Constitution. Several of us just had our swearing-in where we agreed to that. And to use our resources responsibly. And I think this resolution does that. So for those reasons, I too will be voting in favor of it tonight. With that, I'm gonna ask, are there any other comments from my colleagues? Thank you.
So I'm actually gonna make a motion to amend the resolution. To the verbiage, it was, a point was brought up by one of our speakers, and I agree with the point that was brought up. I don't know whether this was just an oversight or not or something different, but I would make a motion to amend the first sentence of the last paragraph where it says, be a further resolved that the township will continue to fully comply with all applicable state and local laws to, I would, my motion would be to just simply include in federal With all applicable state, comma, federal, and local laws. Or if you wanted to go applicable federal, comma, state, and local laws.
Commissioner Gonda.
Is there a second? For that motion? He offered a mo.
I think I have to get the approval of the person who sponsored the motion.
Okay, fair enough. Then I'll ask Commissioner Cavender. I could just mention, I, there's a different version. I'm not sure how the word got deleted, but it does say, at least in the version that Commissioner Holmes has in his booklet.
Whereas.
It's in the whereas section, that which is the third paragraph from the end, whereas the Haverford Township Police Department will continue to enforce all applicable federal, state, and local laws.
And I, and I appreciate that. I would respectfully maintain my motion to amend just because the whereas clause that you're referencing really only addresses the police department, whereas the last paragraph speaks to the township as a whole.
I'm okay with that. I thought originally it was a diversion thing, but that, I'm okay with that change.
Thank you.
I see.
As the second, I agree that we already have indicated in our rec.
As the seconder, I agree that we already have indicated in our recital that Haverford Township Police Department will continue to enforce all applicable federal, state, and local laws. At the end of the resolution where we say, "Be it further resolved that the township will continue to fully comply with all applicable state and local laws," I do believe that that is a typo and that we meant to say all applicable federal, state, and local laws. And I don't think that it is my intention or the intention of this board to say that the township will not comply with federal law, and what we are doing is actually in compliance with federal law, which is reviewing our rights under 287-G and exercising the policy decision not to. So I also support that text change to the last paragraph of the resolution.
Thank you, Austin.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Then hearing none, we'll consider this resolution as amended. We'll move to a vote. Ms. Cuthbertson. Commissioner Gondak.
No.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCullum.
No.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta. Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Don't all leave, we're about to hear a Bureau of Fire report from Commissioner Gondak. Or is yours?
Okay. Haverford Township Bureau of Fire report for December 2025. We had total incidents of 98, of which 72 were township incidents and 26 were out-of-t township mutual aid incidents. The average personnel per call was 17. We had 982 personnel hours committed to incidents and 353 personnel hours committed to training. The Haverford Township Bureau of Fire provided mutual aid to four working fires within Delaware County and three working fires in Montgomery County. And the Haverford Township Bureau of Fire responded to a working fire at 2237 Avon Road on Tuesday, December 9th at 8:12 PM. Eighty-nine members from the five township fire companies responded along with the mutual aid from Brumall Fire Company. Companies were on scene for an hour and 54 minutes, and that is the report.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Commissioner Gondak? Then hearing none, we'll invite our township auditor. Mr. Ross Anderson is not here anymore. Ms. Cuthbertson, will you offer a report?
Mr. Anderson did stop me when I went into the back. He did have to leave while there was still a debate on the other issue. He did want me to relay that he did look at his selection. He did not have any comments, and everything was to his satisfaction. He also wanted me to add that the Eagles do need a new offense, which I told him I would test it.
Thank you so much. We're actually going to move on to now Township Manager update. As our Assistant Township Manager, please report.
I do just have one piece of information to pass along. It's more in my finance director hat. We will be sending out our annual love letter to our residents. It'll go out the end of this month. It should be arriving in homes the first week of February, and that is our annual Township Tax Bill. It is green this year. That is how we differentiate ours from everybody else's. Ours is a different color. If the residents of our township do not receive it, please contact the Finance Department at our general number, and we will be happy to either email you a copy or get you another one out in the mail. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Cuthbertson?
Ms. Cuthbertson, just for people who are maybe watching or here, will the township be accepted, I'm assuming the township will be accepting payments for our township taxes in the township building as usual?
Yes, Commissioner Gondak, thank you for bringing that up. The township staff will be here during normal business hours, starting February 1st is when the true tax season opens. We are here 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday. We also accept e-check and payment via credit card on our website if that is more convenient for you. Otherwise, there will be a return envelope, as there always is, along with the bill, for those who wish to mail it into our lockbox operations. But we are always here in person to take that payment from you and visit with us for a moment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item number seven, the approval of warrants. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President.
Yes, Commissioner Holmes.
Madam President, I move we approve the following warrants. Warrant number one for 2026 totaling $3,481,622.94, comprising the general sewer fund payroll for December 18th of 2025 in the amount of $870,190.69. The general sewer fund payroll for December 31st, 2025 in the amount of $866,796.25. General fund disbursements in the amount of $984,710.47. Sewer fund disbursements in the amount of $153,536.61. Community development block grant disbursement in the amount of $34,647.94. Capital projects fund disbursements in the amount of $194,614.57. The American Rescue Plan fund disbursements in the amount of $357,242.65. And a credit card statement ending December 27th, 2025 in the amount of $19,883.76.
Second.
Heard a motion and a second. The motion's now open for discussion. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues on the board?
Our township auditor has reviewed these. Any questions that he has have been raised to our finance director, and those questions have been answered to his satisfaction. I recommend we approve these warrants.
Thank you. Further comments, discussion? Hearing none. Cuthbertson, please take the roll. Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCullum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
And Commissioner Trombetta. Yes, motion carries. Thank you. We'll now move on to agenda item number eight, appointments.
President Trombetta, motion to appoint Kathleen Goodsell to the Health Advisory Board for a term ending December 31st, 2027.
Second.
Heard a motion and a second. Are there any other nominations for this vacancy?
I move we close nominations.
Second.
Heard a motion to close. The board will now consider the motion to close by a voice vote. All those in favor of closing nominations, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Board will now consider Kathleen Goodsell for the Health Advisory Board for the ending December 31st, 2027. Ms. Cuthbertson. Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Ms. Goodsell.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCullum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta. Yes. Congratulations, Ms. Goodsell. We'll now move on to agenda item number nine, to consider the approval of the items under the consent agenda. Please note that all items are detailed in the public packet. This time, I'd like to ask my colleagues if anyone wishes to remove any items from the consent agenda.
I would not like to remove things, but can we add everything else that's on our agenda? Because I'm no-
No, but thank you.
Could we move everything on?
I'm joking, I'm joking.
Three parking ordinances? I don't see why we didn't do that. We won't do that.
We didn't have a work session.
Right.
Fair.
Right, so we broke everything down due to the fact that, into individual items for consideration due to the lack of a-
Clarification.
All right. So hearing none of requests, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Can I move to approve items A and B of the consent agenda as further detailed in the pub-
Second.
Second.
Heard a motion and a second. The motion's now open for discussion. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? And hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCullum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta. Yes, motion carries. We'll now move on to agenda item number 10, ordinances. Tonight, we'll consider three ordinances, beginning with P-192025.
Madam President.
Yes.
Madam President, I move we adopt second reading of ordinance P-192025, further amending and supplementing ordinance number 1960, adopted June 30, 1986, and known as the general laws of the Township of Haverford, Chapter 175, vehicles and traffic, installing a special purpose parking zone in front of 2922 Berkeley Road.
Second. Heard a motion and a second. The motion's now open for discussion. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues on the board? And hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Ms. Cuthbertson. Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCullum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta. Yes, motion carries. Board will now consider P-202025 a traffic ordinance. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P-202025, further amending and supplementing ordinance number 1960, adopted June 30, 1986, and known as the general laws of Township of Haverford, Chapter 175, vehicles and traffic, installing a special purpose parking zone in front of 2401 Clover Lane.
Heard a motion and a second.
Second.
Heard a motion and a second. Motion's now open for discussion. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? And hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCullum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta. Yes, motion carries. Board will now consider P-1-2026. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P-12026, further amending and supplementing ordinance number 1960, adopted June 30, 1986, and known as the general laws of Township of Haverford, Chapter 175, vehicles and traffic, installing a special purpose parking zone in front of 605 Woodland Drive.
This motion is a second.
Second.
Heard a motion and a second. The motion's now open for discussion. Any questions or comments from my colleagues on the board?
Just for clarification, is this an installation of a handicap sign or handicap parking? Yes, okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCullum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta. Yes, motion carries. This exhausts our ordinance on the agenda this evening. So we'll move on to number, agenda item number 11, resolutions. We'll consider three resolutions, beginning with 2474-2026. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President.
Yes, Commissioner Holmes.
Madam President, I move we adopt Resolution 2474 of 2026, authorizing the disposal of public records.
Second.
Heard a motion and a second. Motion's open for discussion. Any questions or comments?
Just for clarification, this is stuff that is disposed of that we don't need, need, well, need, need anymore, and it's done by wagons, right?
That is correct. Anything with the personal protected information we have shredded professionally by wagons, anything with that, we recycle just properly with our own staff.
Thank you. This is an annual exercise we undertake every first meeting.
Correct. We do this in January of each year in accordance with the Municipal Records Act.
And our, the years listed in the, in the resolution are, are the years dictated by the act.
Correct, that is true.
Further questions or comments? And hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCullum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta. Yes, motion carries. I'll now entertain a motion for Resolution 2475-2026.
Madam President.
Yes, Commissioner Holmes.
I move we adopt Resolution 2475 of 2026, authorizing the 2026 professional consultant fees schedule.
Second. I've heard a motion and a second. The motion's open for discussion. Any questions or comments?
Just remind people, this is, this is not the, this is not the fees we pay to our consultants. This is the fees that we charge people for whom a township professional has to be employed with regard to a specific project. And it represents about a, it's like a five, looks like a 5% increase. Am I right about that?
You are correct. As far as the engineering fees, these are the fees we also pay. The township does pay these as well, and the solicitor.
Okay.
So both township and any property owner who needs these professional services, we would pass on those same fees to them.
Terrific, thank you for that clarification.
Any further discussion? And hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCullum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta. Yes, motion carries. This exhausts our resolutions for the evening, as we already wrote it on the other resolution. So we'll now move on to agenda item number 12, related to the amicus brief filing. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President, I move we authorize Haverford Township's participation in amicus brief filing in regard to Lincoln National Life Insurance Company versus Radnor Township.
Is there a second?
Second.
Heard a motion and a second. The motion's open for discussion. Any questions or comments from my colleagues?
I'm interested, oh, sorry, someone else is speaking. I'm just interested in understanding what the amicus brief is and what the case is. I don't think we've discussed it previously.
I'm happy to discuss that. This was originally a request that was made by the Township's Act 511 Council. That's the council that handles the business privilege tax or any mercantile taxes for the township. And it's also something that the Act 511 Council for my law firm has been circulating to our other clients where we serve as 511 Council. The background of the situation is all about business privilege taxes and the issue on appeal that is of interest to all municipalities, which is why they're asking for an amicus brief or friends of the court brief to join in on a position, relates to interest or the ability for a municipality to charge interest when a business privilege tax is not paid. So what, what is open for discussion is whether the Local Tax Enabling Act authorizes a municipality charging interest on the gross receipt taxes that a business takes in. It's our position that interest should be able to be charged, otherwise it's free money and there's no incentive for someone to pay their taxes on time. And that is the position of most municipalities. So this is, this would be at no cost to the township. This is simply asking whether or not this township, as has been requested of many other municipalities, are interested in signing on for this position and submit a brief, which is on appeal to the Commonwealth Court on that particular issue.
Thank you.
On the appeal to Commonwealth Court, who's the, who's the appellant?
Uh, Radnor is the appellant. Um, the issue related to the interest was not addressed at the lower court. Radnor is appealing, uh, generally the, uh, tax amount anyways. So that is one of the issues that is left, left open. So the, the lower court didn't rule specifically on the interest issue, but they are raising that particular issue on appeal.
Thank you.
Thank you, Solicitor Walco. Any further comments, questions? And hearing none, we'll move to a vote.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCullum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
He stepped away.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, we now move on to agenda item 13 regarding the purchase of an ambulance chassis. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President, like, excuse me, make a motion to award a purchase order to Andrew Fleet for a 2026 Ford Super Duty F-550, excuse me, chassis in the amount of $61,995 under the Pennsylvania Co-Stars Cooperative Purchasing Agreement.
Second.
Heard a motion is second. The motion's open for discussion. Any questions or comments? And hearing none, we'll move to a vote.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCullum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Motion carries. We now move on to agenda item number 14 regarding a contract to retrofit the Township's Lifeline Ambulance. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to award a contract in the amount of $197,213 to 10 E emergency vehicles for the retrofit of the Township's existing Lifeline ambulance to the new 2026 chassis under the Pennsylvania Co-Stars Cooperative Purchasing Agreement.
For a second?
Second.
Heard a motion is second. The motion's open for discussion. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? And hearing none, we'll move to a vote.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCullum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yeah. Thank you. I just realized I offered the wrong number there, but we'll move on to the next agenda item regarding electrical box at Veterans Field. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to award a contracting amount of $15,720 to Charles A. Higgins and Son for replacement of the damaged electrical cabinet at Veterans Field.
Is there a second? Heard a motion is second. Motion's open for discussion. Any questions or comments? And hearing none, we'll go vote.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCullum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
And Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to the next agenda item, a change order for the locker room renovation project. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to authorize a change order in the amount of $6,621.82 to LGB Mechanical for heavy duty shower diverters handles for the locker room renovation project.
Heard a motion is their second.
Second.
Thank you. The motion's open for discussion. Any questions or comments?
I can speak from experience that the, uh, the, the, the work they are doing on the showers and the handles is necessary. I don't think, um, the original stuff, despite being professional grade, was, um, uh, was fully adequate for the job.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Hearing no.
The renovations are really terrific.
Awesome. Um, any further comments, questions? And hearing no further discussion, we'll move to a vote.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCullum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Motion carries. We'll now move on to the next agenda item regarding professional service contract, related to auditing services. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President.
Yes, Commissioner Holmes.
I move we award a professional service contract in the amount of $126,750 for a three-year engagement with Maylie LLP.
Is there a second?
Second.
Heard a motion is second. Motion's open for discussion. Any questions or comments from my colleague?
It is the recommendation of our finance director, whose recommendations I rarely ignore, that we, uh, um, that we enter into this agreement, and I recommend it to all of us.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, we'll move to a vote.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCullum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
And Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Motion carries. We'll now move on to the next agenda item, the continuation of our citizens forum. This is providing an opportunity for members of the public who wish to address the board, uh, potentially on items not on the agenda or previously on the agenda. So ask, ask you now if you'd like to offer any further comments this evening, starting on the left-hand side. Yes, Mr. Hall.
Good evening. Todd Hall from the Second Ward, Country Club Lane, also known as The Lane, also known as CCL. Crowd has certainly thinned out. This reminds me of watching the House of Representatives on weeknights in high school. Yeah, I had a very exciting life.
I did too, so.
Bernie Sanders, uh, speak to a very empty crowd, so, uh, but I'm here to speak about two enhancements to the township. Uh, the first would be signage at our more, uh, popular parks with picnic pavilions about children and food allergies. Uh, our son and I recently visited the Fox Point State Park in the First State on their 238th birthday for a ranger-led hike. And I noticed at the picnic pavilion, they had a sign, a picture of which I'll email to all of you and to Mr. Barrett and Parks and Recreation that highlights the prevalence of food allergies for children and the importance of things to be mindful of to help protect children with food allergies in a public setting. Um, as Helen Lovejoy in The Simpsons would often say, "Think of the children. Will somebody please think of the children?" Uh, when I developed my food allergies, they were much later in life, um, but I feel for, you know, a child that would need that type of help and, and guidance in this type of regard. Uh, second, I think the township could look into inquiring with partnering with HelpSee for a clothing recycling bin. In advantage of this, as compared to other traditional clothing donations, they recycle and repurpose fabric that can't be redistributed as clothing. It would also reduce the volume of trash, uh, that's collected by the township and help the environment. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Um, any further comments from the audience on the left-hand side? Somebody on the right-hand side? Yes, Mr. Lee.
Hi, I'm Mike Lee. I'm Haverford Township President. Uh, I just wanted to thank you for addressing the license plate issue and your comments earlier. Um, I think that we should collect the minimum, um, the, enough data to meet Chief Viola's needs, but that we should just collect the minimum amount. Right now, we have, I think, five license plate readers is what's planned or is in effect. And I can collect thousands of pieces of data on everybody who goes through the township. And unless there's a reason for habit, we, we should not collect it. Anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there comments? Somebody on the, okay, very well. Um, do any of my colleagues want to respond to any of the comments made?
I do want to address the issue about the license plate readers. Um, as it is, they are, they are only on our major thoroughfares. Um, so it isn't like anybody is seeing who's driving down Chestnut Ave. Um, and, and it really is for the purpose of, of, of tracking somebody basically in flight from the police. Um, we know we had a, I guess it was about 18 months ago when we had that road rage incident of the shooting in, um, uh, right down at the corner of Lawrence and, and Route 3. Um, and it was that kind of real-time data that enabled, uh, I think it was the Philly PD ultimately to apprehend the person who did the shooting. Um, so, um, it, it really, um, it's, it's purpose, and this doesn't change my reservations about it, and I, I, I take very seriously your concerns and, and plan to follow through with it. But it's, um, it, it, this is designed to not to be surveilling the township as much as it is, to just use our, you know, to, to be capturing data at our, at our, in our biggest throughways where people are likely to escape a bank robbery or be passing through our town from, you know, one town to another, having just perhaps committed a crime and their, their, their license plate has been identified. So I, I think we, do we have three locations, Chief? Is it?
Five locations, but to keep in mind, it's not just Haverford Township. No matter where you drive in Delaware County across the region, there are cameras almost in every municipality.
Sure. No, I'm hip that, to that, and I, I, as Eleanor Roosevelt said, it's better to light one single candle than curse the darkness. If we can, you know, maintain our people's privacy, even if while all around us, people don't, it's still worth considering.
It's one of our best crime fighting tools we have for real-time crime.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks, Chief.
Issue is.
Nope.
Yes, and, and, and that's also very important. The data, how long do they keep it? Where do they keep it? And what are their duties to inform us if any of those change? Those are all questions that PD and I have spoken about, um, already, and, uh, and are trying to get, and are going to get answers for. Absolutely.
I will respond to Mr. Hall a little bit to say that while we do not have a HelpSee clothing bin, we last year did have our first ever HelpSee clothing drive. Commissioner Forresty Grubb and I, um, and, um, Ms. Cathbertson, uh, assisted in that. It was wildly popular to the point where we have already, um, scheduled our next clothing drive, which will take place on June 13 from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m., and we are hoping that it is as successful as it was the first year. But we're excited to be able to offer that to our constituents and always worth, you know, considering, uh, an actual bin to make it more permanent. But that said, um, thank you for your comments.
Madam President.
Yes.
When we, when we advertise that, we advertise the recycling nature of it as well as the, as the reuse and the donation nature of it. It, I think maybe if I understood from Mr. Hall correctly, one of the benefits of this, not just the bin, but this organization is that it will take things that people might be embarrassed to donate because it could still, it could still, uh, recycle the fabric, is that correct?
Yes. Um, and we do, um, at least last year, I recall that it, there was, um, a, a further explanation on our website which described what we would accept.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes, Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Would like to address what, uh, Mr. Hall suggested.
Please.
I think your idea of having food allergy signs in the pavilions is a very good one. Thankfully, food allergies for children are dropping rapidly because of all the innovative treatments of it coming out of pen for how to reduce especially peanut allergies, allergies. Um, you mentioned a, um, the HelpSee clothing drive. It was wildly successful. We actually had to end it a little bit early last year because so many people dropped things off, and I'm glad to know that we'll do another one. I think it is worth having a clothing bin to explore that option, but I would also, uh, sort of, uh, piggyback on something that I noted this past weekend when I went down to the Haverford Township's recycling area where we have dumpsters for cardboard and, um, glass and plastic, that someone had left a huge sort of generator of some sort that they did not want to dispose of at the side of one of, um, the dumpsters. And then someone else had thrown all sorts of electrical conduits, what looked like to my eyes, electrical conduits in the, um, plastic and the cardboard recycling, um, dumpsters. And I think if we want to maintain our strong recycling efforts, folks need to be careful about reading directions for what can and cannot be recycled. So any, any educational efforts that, uh, we can continue to make so that people dispose of things properly, that increases our recycling. And every time we don't throw a glass bottle in our recycling, that actually, and we take it to the bin over at the crack, that actually helps our bottom line. So recycling's important. Let's keep educating. And that's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Further comments? And hearing none, we'll move on to new business. Are there any matters my colleagues would like to bring forward for discussion at this time under new business?
President Trombetta, just a brief update on our zoning update process. Um, really no significant change from what I reported last month. Our staff and consultants continue to work on reformatting our zoning ordinance as well as updating some definitions. Uh, we're hopeful that they'll produce a draft of their work in the coming weeks, uh, which will then, uh, be reviewed by, um, our steering committee for comments. Once a draft is approved, it will be made public, um, and it will also then go to the planning commission for their comments as well as pub, public comment. Um, hopefully that is something that's going to happen in the spring. Hopefully the early part of the spring, so probably March, April. Um, uh, and again, this part of the process is not, there will be no substantive changes in the ordinance. It's going to just change the way that the ordinances, uh, the zoning ordinance is formatted, so it'll be easier to read. There will be some new definitions, and again, it will be something that will be reviewed by the public, by the planning commission, and ultimately by our board. That's all I have. Hopefully next month I'll have.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart. Any other, uh, discussion under new business?
Madam President, I would like to take a moment, um, to recognize a fifth ward resident. Kathleen Case passed away in November 2025, and I'd just like to read a little bit from a letter of commendation that the township, um, has, has written on her behalf and will be giving to her family. Kathleen Case was a pillar of civic engagement, both within the Fifth Ward and throughout the township. In the neighborhood of Brinford, where she lived for more than three decades, she played an active and influential role in the Brinford Civic Association. As a neighbor whose home adjoined the Polo Field, served on, she served on numerous civic association committees dedicated to the stewardship, preservation, and care of this historic community treasure. Her thoughtful advocacy, deep knowledge of history, and collaborative spirit helped ensure that this shared space would be protected and enjoyed by current and future generations of Haverford Township residents. And township-wide, Ms. Case was widely respected as an accomplished historian and resolute member of the Haverford Township Historical Commission, as well as a committed volunteer with the Haverford Township Historical Society. Her deep knowledge of American history, her passion for research, and her insistence on accurate, accuracy and context enriched the township's understanding of its own past and strengthened its ability to preserve that legacy for the future. Kathy Case will be remembered for her curiosity, generosity of spirit, and devotion to civic life. Whether preserving local history, mentoring others, or contributing her time and expertise, she exemplified the best of community service. On behalf of Haverford Township, we extend our heartfelt condolences to her husband, Jacques Karudal, and to her children, grandchildren, and extended family. We are deeply grateful for Kathleen Case's enduring contributions and honor her memory with lasting appreciation and respect.
Thank you, Commissioner Cavender. Any other new business? And hearing none, we'll move on to other business. Um, this is the portion during which our commissioners may make their final remarks for the evening. We'll start with First Ward Commissioner Brian Gondak.
Uh, thank you. I'll keep it very brief. Uh, just basically, I want to thank everyone who came out today uh, to provide their comment, uh, to, uh, the matters before us, uh, this evening. Um, and also those who, uh, sent emails or texts or voicemails or phone calls with regards to seeing, whether, whether or not you supported it or were against it, um, the sheer fact that you participated and allowed your voices to be heard is, is important and the pillar of our society. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gondak. We'll move on to Second Ward Commissioner Sherri Forresty Grubb.
I don't have anything further to say. We've had a long meeting and I've, uh, said my piece.
Thank you.
I wish everyone a lovely rest of the evening and a great week.
Thank you. We'll move on to Fifth Ward Commissioner Laura Cavender.
I'll just, um, I wanted to briefly make mention of a, a couple of visits I had over the holiday break to the library. Um, we had an exceptionally long break this year for Christmas, and my son, who's in fifth grade, and I had a, a chance to go twice. He's not a huge reader, but he loves to engage. He's, um, neurodivergent and has a little trouble attending to tasks with just a, a printed book. So, um, you know, the library was so important to me as a child. I lived across the street. I was a huge reader. I was a bookworm. That's all I did is I sat there, checked out books, stacks of books, and read them. Ford's not as much of a reader, but what was amazing to me was the way that, um, he was still able to engage. He learned how to use some programs in the 3D printing lab. Um, there was a great young man working there who was very patient. Um, he was able to connect with some kids in the video game, um, area, including Commissioner McCluskey's son, uh, on one of the days. Um, you know, and, and engage interest in a way that I engaged mine as a child, and I just think it's really wonderful that we're able to continue, um, the library as a place of engagement and growth and community, uh, for kids today, even as things, you know, maybe shift away from printed books and into the digital. So, um, kudos to our library as always. I just wanted to share that, and I hope everyone has a nice night. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Cavender. We'll move on to Sixth Ward Commissioner Larry Holmes.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I also, like Commissioner Gondak, wanted to thank the folks who came out and speak, uh, to speak this evening, uh, and especially note the folks, um, who indicated it was their first time here and, um, not used to public speaking. Um, um, I thought everybody, um, was, was eloquent and, and, uh, did a nice job of communicating, and I appreciate the audience. Respecting folks as they did, this is obviously a very, very strong issue. Um, I, I have indicated earlier in, in the meeting, my feelings on the subject and everything about it, so I'll finish with something completely different. Um, now, unfortunately, the Eagles are out of it. I think we should all rally behind the Steelers, um, who are currently down six, seven. With 28 seconds left in the second, uh, quarter, um, so we can all get home and watch the second half and pull for the steel curtain. So, that's all I have.
Nope.
That was amazing. Thank you. Um, all right, let's move on to Seventh Ward Commissioner Connor Quinn.
Sir, Ward, Ward six, I'm seven. So, so lame.
I love it.
I would also like to thank everybody that came, came out to speak, uh, uh, or, uh, or, uh, tonight. And I would also like to thank our police for always ha, having our back in, in this town. So, thank, thank you guys.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Commissioner Hart.
Uh, just to remind people, if you have time, next Monday is Martin Luther King Day.